City of Lawrence Common Council, it's February 1st, 2021, 6:30 PM. The meeting is now called to order. Can everyone please stand for Pledge of Allegiance and Prayer? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, we thank you for your grace and your mercy, and we pray, Lord, for wisdom and guidance. I pray, Lord, a special hand be upon those first responders and public safety officials. We're grateful for their service and their work. And I pray, Lord, for a blessing and healing over this country. And I pray, Lord, that we remember that our eyes need to be fixed upon you and that the words of our mouth and meditation of our heart be acceptable in your sight. In your name I ask this, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. It looks like we definitely have a quorum. I do not see that Councilor Rusammaraf has joined us yet, but hopefully she'll be joining us soon. All right. Next on the agenda, comments of council members and special recognitions or resolutions. Do we have any?
Madam President, I have two or three tonight. First, I want to thank and recognize Lawrence Fire Department for their tremendous work that they did Friday evening in helping with the apartment fire at 38th and Franklin Road. They did a great job in responding to that, so appreciate all the hard work and went to recognize what they went and did in saving, I believe there was 22 residents that were affected by that. And then along with that, just a shout out to trustee Steve Tally for stepping in and working with the apartment complex for with anybody that was without shelter or needed emergency shelter because of that fire. And then finally, just a really a special shout out to Mr. Fred Freeman, whose birthday, I understand, was yesterday, so Counselor Freeman's husband, so congratulations to him for making it another year.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Any other counselors?
Yes, Madam President, I would like to just announce that today is the first day of Black History Month.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Acknowledge that.
Madam President, I would like to make a comment and thank the street department for taking care of our streets during the snow that we just had. And it was very clean and very clear, and we were able to get to work first thing in the morning, and it just, they did a very great job. So, thank you, guys.
Any other counselors?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to piggyback on that. I was impressed, so impressed again with our, with our street department and the coordination of getting our streets cleaned. As a councilman who represents a district on the edge of Indianapolis, you know, it's clear that there's a reason to live in Lawrence on those snow days. So, we just want to thank those guys for showing, showing how it's done. Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Any other counselors? You do want to put on your calendar, and Counselor Whitfield, you might, or Counselor Freeman, you might have the dates in front of you, but we will be having a Black History Month celebration this year. It will be virtual, and it will be that for the safety of our citizens. And it will not be shortchanged because it's virtual. It will be an awesome celebration, but it will be virtual. And I believe, is the date February 19th? And the mayor might have some details too when he comes up, but I believe it's the 19th. Counselor Whitfield, can you confirm that?
Yes, I think it is the 19th.
Yeah, yeah, I believe so.
I believe so.
And, and it will be posted on, on the city website if it's not already there. I believe it might already be there, and more information will come. But I did just want to let everyone know, I did send an email out to the council to invite as many counselors that would like to participate in, in that celebration virtually to let me know. Many of you have done that. If you have not done that and you would like to participate, please, please let me know. We'd like to make sure that we have a good presence and support of a very important celebration. Any other counselors? No? All right. Next on the agenda, we have our, an economic development update from Dan Zerner. So, Dan, you have the floor.
President Chavez, I'd like to thank you and Counselor Whitfield for inviting me and making it possible to be here this evening. So, tonight you're going to get two presentations in one. I'm going to try to keep it, my portion as brief as possible, but I think you'll find these very exciting, special efforts. I hope you're finding the monthly report that I agreed to hand over to each of you useful. This is a special report tonight. We're not going to spend hardly any time on just the routine things. So, two things you're going to hear about tonight. The first is what we call the Trades District, and you've heard a little bit about that for the last several years, but nothing to the extent you're going to hear tonight. And then the second part of the presentation, about six or five or six months ago, as I came to really get involved with this role, I challenged Murphy and Jared Hooton and Daniel to take the lead and totally reconstruct and reconfigure and bring our website up to a modern standard for economic development. As part of that, we've incorporated and are incorporating FHRA, just some really tremendous things these young men are doing and bringing to the table, and I wanted you to get a glimpse of that tonight so you, you know how to direct others and use it as a resource for yourself. So, first, if I may share this, have a screen sharing, if I may, Jared? You should all be able to see my screen, I hope. So, the Trades District is something that's been talked about for a long time here, and little bits initiative have happened, but really nothing to put it on the map. And I've used this example quite a few times, and it's not maybe the best example, but it's the only example I can really think of, that when Scott Fadnison Fisher started years ago and he had the idea of the nickel plate district, it sure didn't look like it does today. And they've developed that into what anybody with any reason and certainty would, would say is just a phenomenal transition for that city. One of the things I'm trying to do is get our Redevelopment Commission to adopt what I call big hairy audacious goals, things that will totally transition the city beyond our time, beyond my time, beyond the mayor's time, beyond many of your times. These are 20- to 30-year projects that will make the city of Lawrence totally different and totally more desirable and make it sought out even more than it is being today. So, as we look to identify what those roles are, to me, the Trades District became obvious for several reasons. One is we already had a transition commitment from Freeji to develop their world-class headquarters at the intersection of 465 and, and Pendleton Pike. Then came the racetrack development, which you all have heard about and was approved by the BZA the other evening, that will basically develop the next whole block to the east. And so, as we started looking to see what was available, it seemed to us that the Trades District, for going along with the Lawrence Township Schools and the Training Center and the jobs that the governor's talking about, and all the things we want to do and the gateway to our community, this was the area to focus on. So, as I try to present this to you this evening, I wanted to be sure everybody understood the initial area we're looking at. But you'll see that it's bounded by Pendleton Pike to the south, 465 to the west. The railroad track right now is sort of the first phase northern boundary. And then we're taking the view all the way to the east side, a half a block of Franklin. So, the whole Franklin Road corridor from Pendleton Pike up to 46th Street, we're looking at to make a part of this total transition. As you look at this, this was just a concept drawing that was put together by BLN several years ago. This may or may not be anything like what we end up with, but I wanted you to start to see the vision that's going to come about as we start to look to change this whole area and update it to what we think needs to be done to bring Lawrence into the development that we, we have potential for. So, we, the RDC has engaged a group called the Synthesis Group. They're located downtown on Illinois Street. It is a WBE-owned entity. Janelle Smogla is the principal and lead architect. Synthesis is the primary think tank group for development of the Indianapolis Airport. They're involved with 16 Tech, that GM stamping plant renovation, major transitional projects across Marion County and other places in the United States. We interviewed them at length. We believe that they are the group to help us envision what we can really do and focus on in Lawrence as we go forward. There's basically four sections to what we're going to be doing with them over about the next seven-month period. The first one is what they call discovery, and we're in the process now of taking total inventory of the site, the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities identified within the neighborhood. We've, last week, looked at all the utilities with all the department heads. We're looking at things like drainage and security and all the different things that happen, happen in that area right now and how they could impact what we want to do going forward and how they could be potentially changed. They're collecting and analyzing studies that already exist. We're starting to survey and map and model the area and identify certain budget constraints that the RDC may have. Next phase is what they call visioning, to identify trends and map the related civic approaches and attitudes for development. We want to identify competitor modeling neighborhoods that are comparable to benchmarked trend assessments and potential social media listing and research technologies that could be incorporated. As part of that, then you start to develop these models of what you want to see this look like over the next decade, several decades. Then comes what they call ideation. This where conceptual ideologies, three image boards and sketches start to develop. You discard notions and research that don't fit the model. You review phased implementation approaches, start to have whiteboard sessions. And prior to all of this, we've met with all of the businesses and, and stakeholders within these communities to get their ideas and their concerns and their input, what they'd like to see. Then you start to see concepts, like this was what they developed for the Community Justice Center, very first concepts that came about. Then they have what they call creation. This is where the design concepts start to occur, the cost models, things like what we have to start to consider in terms of altering real estate and roads and transportation and drainage patterns and utilities to serve it. All those start, things start to come in, flyover concepts and renderings that lead to this type of work right here that we expect to see in six to eight months of what this could really look like in, in the community. This was what the work they did for 16 Tech that's transitioning right now. Then outcomes start to develop, how many square feet of development do we expect, biking trails or access or green parks or whatever may come out of this or may not come out of this, the number of jobs it could possibly create, and we start to look at the state as to where there might be some grant funding and, and other monies available, perhaps SuLily or other foundations to hopefully support this initiative as we develop plans executable. And that's the key. My challenge to everybody involved with this is we don't want another plan that just sits on a shelf. We want a detailed step-by-step approach with phasing plan, budgets, actionable steps, to where we really know what we need to do to make this happen over a period of time. Here's the budget and timeline overview, and I'm really taking a presentation, it was about an hour and a half long, and cutting to you for about 10 to 12 minutes, out of respect of your time, and at any point, I'm glad to discuss any of this with any of you. But these are the budgets that the RDC set aside to finish this work and the six-month timeline of how long these things will take. So, that's what we're headed to with the RDC and the Trades District area. It's very, very forward-thinking, I believe, and I think we'll have some exciting things to share with the council and, and other departments within the city as we go through this process over the next several months. And I would hope that the appointments that you've made from the council to the RDC will keep you up to date on this, and certainly you can reach out to me at any point in time. So, if there's any quick questions before we move on to the website, I would be glad to take those.
Madam Chair, I got, well, not questions, but comments.
Go right ahead, Counselor Chavez.
I think it's a wonderful, wonderful, emboldened, ambitious plan. I am very excited about it. My only comments that I do have were only addressed in the last sentence of your presentation. And that was that there's been, there were several comments that you had reached out, you had spoken to stakeholders and partners throughout the process, but I am the counselor for that district, and I have not been included in any of this. So, I am curious to who are these partners or the people that you've told or you're directing or that are involved and whom they might be, that they're so high level that I was told about this at the same time as the other counselors, and that is my council district.
Carol, that's a great question, and you misunderstood me or I misspoke. We've only started this in the last week, and so we really haven't polled or pooled any of the stakeholders yet. That's in work yet to come of certain, and you would certainly be included in that process. The only meeting we've had so far was a kickoff meeting with the actual Synthesis and the mayor and Deputy Mayor Fenwick and Joe Murphy and myself to determine exactly how many meetings we're supposed to have, who we were going to include down the road, which you're part of that. And the only other meeting we've had to date was the utility meeting with the department heads to look at the drainage work going on and the utility work. So, we hope to have COVID enough behind us. Quite frankly, we're dragging our heels and slowing them down a little bit. We hope to have COVID behind us enough that we can actually hold a stakeholders meeting in March or April with all the stakeholders present in the public assembly room and start to work on this together. So, you haven't been excluded to this point. Nobody else has been involved either. We're just now kicking this off.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Madam Chair, may I? Okay, I didn't hear you.
Lord Counselor Wells, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. That area is highly commercial, maybe light industrial. Is a part of that or any of that going to remain that way in your new plan or what?
It'll all be that way. The plan is actually to develop that even further. The plan is this, is to actually turn that in and expand the, the leverage what Freeji bringing to the table to bring in more construction activities, more construction training, more job potential and career potential and industrial investment. So, that's why my use of the nickel plate district probably isn't a good example because you picture that as restaurants and other type.
Yes, that's what I, yeah, exactly right.
I didn't mean it from that perspective. I meant it from this perspective of creating a vision and making it happen. And our vision from this perspective is to turn this into more, more industrial, commercial, construction-related activities that bring that kind of investment and jobs to the city of Lawrence.
So, you're, you're envisioning that the businesses that are there would stay there, but you would just expand on that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other counselors?
Madam President? Yeah, go right ahead.
I just have one comment. It's not really a question. I, and I think in your last sentence there, you kind of corrected it a little bit. The, I think that the nickel plate example isn't exactly the, the best one because I like your design in here where there's a lot more green space. We got some good parks, but it, but the example of creating something where a lot of folks can go to, I think relates back to it. In my opinion, nickel plate's a little bit too cramped. There's not a lot of places to walk around, and it's hard to drive through, but the schematic and the drawings you have here, I think, goes a little bit over and above, above that. So, that was just a comment, not necessarily a question. I do look forward to, to talking with you further.
What I hope you all understand is we don't know what we don't know right now. That's why we hired Synthesis to tell us what this should become, to survey the existing businesses, all the stakeholders, and look at what the best opportunity is for the city of Lawrence, and come back and help make recommendations that we'll be sharing with you in five or six months in detail.
Madam President, I have a question. This is Counselor Rusammaraf.
You have the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Zerner, I understand that the nickel plate was heavily influenced by trails, sidewalks, pedestrian influences, bicycling, and I'm quite concerned that we would have that same emphasis in our trader, traders' area plan as well. Do you envision any of that at this point, or what's, what's the philosophy on that point? Thank you.
I don't think, I don't think we've developed a philosophy yet because we want to see what the existing businesses need and want to grow and leverage on them and see how that ties into the residential areas that are currently exist and to the east. But we also want to see what their vision and what their suggestions are relative to the growth of Franklin Road because we believe that Franklin Road, Post Road, 56th Street, all these major corridors are the, are the arteries and the lifeblood of this, of this city. And so, right now, I'm not taking anything for granted. I want, you have to keep in mind that all the work that Synthesis has done to date in all these other entities has been extremely well-balanced. They have planners and others engaged in the process. So, that's why we hired them is to be sure we brought skill sets to the table that we knew we didn't have within the city administration and let them lead us through this process. So, I don't think anybody, I think it's okay to, to be sure your interests are listened to and considered, but I don't think any of us right now should, should really be worried or concerned until we see what comes to the table because I, I think there's going to be an awful lot of thought and debate and discussion relative to all these matters as we go forward.
So, counselors, this is the, this is sort of what I will call the early warning that we've always desired to have when we have major projects. So, to Mr. Zerner's point, it's really, really early in the discovery phase. So, we've got a, you know, five, six-month heads-up as to what's being worked on. So, to his point, you know, if you have any very specific questions, concerns, or whatever, please feel free to reach out to Mr. Zerner and get your concerns or questions answered. But it's really early, and we don't know what the plan's going to be yet. These are just a bunch of ideas, I think, and, and it's got to be vetted through the entire process. So, thank you for the early warning. It's much, much appreciated.
Thank you. You know, one of the things I pledge to you, you're kind of damned if you do and damned if you don't, one of the things I pledge to the council is not to keep you in the dark. And so, President Chavez, you're exactly right. This is just a tip to you that, that we're starting this process, so if you hear about it, you're not taken by surprise.
Appreciate that.
So, with that, I'd like to turn the balance of the presentation over to Joe Murphy and Jared and let them show you the exciting work that they've been doing relative to the website. I think you'll be really pleased.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Can everybody hear me all right, first off?
Yes.
All right, thank you. President Chavez, I appreciate you having me here, council members. For those of you who do not know me yet, my name is Joe Murphy, as Dan pointed out. I serve at the side of Mayor Collier and Dan Zerner as deputy chief of staff to the city of Lawrence. I've been in my current position for about a year and a half, and one of the things that I've been doing since Dan's come on is serve kind of as his right-hand man here in the city of Lawrence in regards to all matters economic development. And as Dan mentioned to you earlier in his presentation, he challenged Jared and myself about five, six months ago to come up with a better way to sell Lawrence specifically to businesses looking to move or develop more in the city of Lawrence. And so, that's exactly what we've done, and what I'm going to show you today is a brand-new website that the city, that Jared and I have developed that kind of partners with, I apologize. Can everybody see my screen now?
Yes.
All right, good. That partners with our existing cityoflawrence.org website, but kind of expands on our economic development portion well beyond what we currently have. So, whether you know it or not, at the top of the bar here, we've always had a tab labeled "economic development." Prior to, a couple days ago, when we updated the site, all it really had was a couple key points of information relevant to the Census Bureau and a couple different statistical pieces of information, as well as some city history. We've expanded on this, and now if you click on this "economic development" tab, it launches you to a brand-new website called chooselawrence.com. This is a website that Jared created whole cloth by himself. I can't express how much I'm appreciative of the work he's done. Choose Lawrence is our business-facing website now for the city of Lawrence. It is specifically designed to attract and retain businesses and help continue to develop the city. And the first piece of that is a video that I'd like to show you all now that was done by Daniel Byer, who I'm sure you're all familiar with. He's done excellent work, and without further ado, I'll show you this video. I hope you can hear it. Let me know if you can't hear it. I can't hear it. Apologize.
Unshare, Joe, and then reshare and check share audio.
There it goes. What was that, Jared? Is it not coming through?
When you initially share, there's an option to share audio, but it's often by default.
Sorry about this, folks. There we go. Try this again.
Joe, if I understood him right, you have to exit screen share and click that toggle when you share, go to select screen share.
Oh, I'm sorry. That is advanced.
While he's figuring that out, I might share with you all that one of the biggest challenges we have is national, international site selectors will look at our website to determine if they have any interest in coming to Lawrence before we ever know it. And if they don't see what they're interested in, they just don't show up. So, largely, we're trying to do this to be sure that we don't miss that opportunity.
All right. I apologize. I think this should work now. Third turn to charm.
The city of Lawrence is certainly headed down a great path. The cultural campus is well underway, and the purple line is about to come through. I'm being approached on a regular basis by people wanting to come into the city of Lawrence.
I feel like Lawrence is kind of the crossroads of Indianapolis. Lots of cities around us, and we're bordered up to Indianapolis itself.
We're about 20 minutes northeast of downtown Indianapolis and centrally located between a lot of the central Indiana employee hubs that would be attracted to come work here.
We're on a upward trajectory to become more of a business hub. We're building housing. We're bringing businesses in. When you come down off of 465 or you come up Pendleton Pike, you will see, "Welcome to City of Lawrence Trades District." McKenzie Career Center will partner up with companies that are coming to the Trades District. So, high schoolers can come there and be set to start work the day they leave high school.
Our reputation is kind of preceding us right now, and that's a tribute to my staff and to the people working for me.
And the winner is Fort Ben Tech Campus in the city of Lawrence.
We were awarded the Rising Tech City Award by Tech Point in the annual MIRA Awards.
Technology, 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 which a lot of people do not think of for Lawrence.
That is celebrating the 28 or so tech companies that have inhabited some of these historic, unique buildings at the fort. Fort Ben was formerly about a 2,500-acre military post.
A fort that was decommissioned, but all the beautiful, classic, historic buildings are still here.
I think the reason a lot of people fall in love with Fort Ben once they discover it is its unique blend of old and new.
There's unbelievable food, lots of things to do, entertain, and that's year-round. I mean, summer, you've got the state park. We have our winter fest and the ice skating. Eli Lilly just gave us this amazing.
Eli Lilly just gave us this amazing grant for the arts.
Fort Ben is seeing a major time period of momentum.
I love it as well, because we have a vast diversity. And that's not only in the people and their cultures, but also in lots of different businesses and capacities of businesses. And I just see Lawrence continuing to move down that road of a business hub, but it's still going to be a nice, quaint, quiet town. That, again, is great for raising the family.
All right. So that kind of kicks off the website there. And Alitha and David both do a great job of kind of talking a bit about what this website wants to do, and that is continue to attract, you know, great businesses into the City of Lawrence so that we can grow our base and really stick out within the Marion County area and the greater Indianapolis metropolitan area. And so without further ado, I'll kind of go through this piece by piece. I'm going to try to be brief, because I know you guys have a large agenda to get to today. But I'd encourage you guys, again, you can find this both by clicking off of our cityoflawrence.org website on economic development, or you can type in chooselawrence.org into your URL. So our homepage here, what we have is just your basic information that you might want to know if you were a business considering locating Lawrence. Where is Lawrence, for example? Lawrence is located in northeast Indianapolis. You know, we have two regional airports and an international airport within very short driving distance of us. That's a relevant thing that people want to know about. In addition, we also have our quick interstate access, so we highlight that here. We've got direct access to I-465 via 56th Street and Pendleton Pike. You know, those all link up to all our major arteries, I-70, I-69, and I-65, which, again, we highlight here in text allows you to get all throughout the Midwestern area within less than two hours, really. And then we also highlight the city's history here. And I'd encourage you guys to go and read this. It's all very important and curated stuff. A lot of help from Alitha Dunson curating this piece of the website. Next, we move into our city vision. This is where we house all of our ongoing projects, as well as all of our master planning documents, so that people can understand where the city's headed. So if this will load. I do apologize for the slow loading speeds. Oh, well, it jumped me into the master plan document, but that's okay. So here we have a City of Lawrence master planning documents that are relevant to economic development. So Dan mentioned this in his presentation. We did publish a 2017 Trades District Master Plan that touches on the developments that we hope to see in the coming years. Obviously, once the Synthesis Master Plan is completed, it will be uploaded here as well, as well as our recently completed Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So those are housed here. In addition to our City of Lawrence Master Plans, we have all of the planning documentation dating back to the early 2000s for the Fort Harrison Reuse Authority, and that's all linked directly here to PDFs that you can find online. And it's all hosted here on this website. And then if I can get the project pipeline piece to load, here we go. We can also see all of our ongoing projects in the City of Lawrence to date. And so these are all of our ongoing projects, from the cultural campus to David Leclerc Holmes, to some that we just announced that are very exciting, like the Freeji Headquarters and Drone Deck Headquarters, a group that just bought a piece of property from the Redevelopment Commission and hopes to turn it into a headquarters for a really cool tech drone-related company. The Pat McAfee Show is relocating to Lawrence, as you all know. That's an exciting project. So this is where we highlight all of those projects, and we link directly to their websites and their stories if we have news stories related to those as well. We shift over to our economic development statistics. We also have some of that key statistics that we pulled from our old website. This is information that a lot of businesses use as a criteria for determining whether or not they want to look into a specific city or region. Population and population growth are key contributors to whether or not a business is going to select a certain area, as well as median age, because they want to know how many workers are available for their business. And then we've got our demographic breakdown as well and workforce info. So we've got, you know, two great things working for us. We have a median income in Lawrence that is higher than the Indianapolis and state average, and we also have a cost of living index, which is very low relative to the U.S. So those two contributing factors really play well for the City of Lawrence, as well as a low unemployment rate, which obviously has not been updated to reflect the current circumstances, but we reflect that to prove out in the long term. So we have not updated it. And then a quick little touch on our high school and college demographics as well. Moving from here, we also have a list of top industries. Businesses want to know what businesses currently operate in Lawrence. We've got a business total number, 3,500 roughly, as of 2012. This is, that's tough to find on the internet, but that's the most current number we have. And then we have a little bit of information about our very diverse workforce and employment sectors. So we've got 12% of our businesses working in healthcare and social assistance. You know, we also have retail trade, manufacturing, construction. And I'm going to kind of breeze through a piece of this, or all of this, because it's important, but I want to get through this quickly. Next, we have territory. This is a very important piece of the website. This is where we've gathered up all the properties that are owned either by the City of Lawrence, the Redevelopment Commission, or the Fort Harrison Reuse Authority, and we've listed them for sale, similar to how you'd see on Realtor.com, for example, with real estate parcels, except this time, we're listing these for commercial sale. And so we have all of those properties listed here. And actually, a couple of these to point out, 4711 German Church Road is one, for example, that we're receiving offers on currently. We're hoping to sell that property in the next couple of months. Several of these from the Fort Harrison Reuse that are going to be later with, parcel J West, for example. So these are all listed here. This is so that businesses that are interested in acquiring land know what's available and available directly to them from the City of Lawrence or our subsidiaries. Also on this page is housed is a link to Zoom Prospector. If you're not familiar with Zoom Prospector, I'd encourage you to check it out. It's the state of Indiana's, you know, Realtor.com for commercial property to continue with that analogy. So all we have, we have here is all the industrial, commercial, real estate available by both private sellers and municipalities. So if we zoom in on the Indianapolis area, we can see that actually the FHRA's parcels are listed on here for sale. So you've got those five there. So that's another way for people to learn about the real estate available in Lawrence. And what's great about Zoom Prospector is it also lists commercial developments for sale. So even though the City of Lawrence may not be selling a property, and it might be being sold by a private seller, businesses can still learn about whether or not, what is and is not for sale in the City of Lawrence. So that's a really neat feature about this website, and that's why we've chosen to highlight it underneath our properties page on chooselawrence.com. And again, that's linked directly if you click on the Zoom Prospector button. Also under territory, we have city maps. I know this will be important to you as councilors. We have not only our interactive GIS map, but we also have our street and subdivisions map and our council districts map, so that businesses coming into the City of Lawrence can learn about who is representing them and ask questions if they want to reach out to you guys. So I think that's something that we've chosen to highlight, which we believe is very important as well. And then last but not least, we have our incentives page. Our incentives page isn't necessarily things that the City of Lawrence itself is offering, but these are all programs that you qualify for by choosing Lawrence as your new home if you are a business. So we've chosen to categorize those by state. Our federal, state, and local incentives. Federal, we've chosen to highlight the Small Business Administration as the main incentive. They're located just on Keystone Avenue, right next to the Fashion Mall, but they do a lot of work with Lawrence businesses. And we have great relationships with the Small Business Administration. We have their link right there. If we move to state, that's a really neat feature about Zoom Prospector. No, I'm sorry?
I think just be some background noise. If everybody, please be reminded to mute your line if you're not speaking.
And then again, under state incentives, we have three different programs listed. We have the Next Level Jobs Initiative. We have the Office of Work-based Learning and Apprenticeship. And we have Indiana Economic Development Corporation. If you click down here, you can see that, we'll start with Indiana Economic Development Corporation. We've got a brief description of what they primarily do with Indiana business incentives. And then we have a link to all of their incentives, which range from tax credits to tax exemptions, as well as grant funding. With the other two, the Indiana Office of Work-based Learning and Apprenticeship and the Next Level Jobs, those are run out of the Department of Workforce Development. So they're, you know, going to be based more towards developing new jobs and incentivizing new growth within existing businesses. And so they provide a number of different incentives, such as grants for workforce development, as well as actually coming out and designing a new program surrounded, built around workplace development and apprenticeships to help grow the new generation of laborers in Indiana. So those are really incredible incentives that we've chosen to highlight here. And we have, again, great relationships with the heads of those groups, and we work very closely with them when we bring new businesses into Lawrence. And then finally, we have our local incentives, which we've chosen to highlight, Develop Indy, which is a great organization that's based out of the city of Indianapolis. And they have a long list of incentives that they offer to businesses that operate within Marion County. And we're actually doing several different projects with them right now, including the Williams Comfort Air Training Grant, which I'm sure you guys have heard of, and providing grant assistance to Williams Comfort Air as they develop new jobs in Lawrence. And then we also highlight the Greater Lawrence Chamber of Commerce, which works very closely with businesses, as you all know, to help create relationships and grow within the City of Lawrence. And then lastly, we have a contact sheet, so that if there are any, any questions that have been unanswered by our website, you can reach out to us directly via Dan Zerner and get in touch with us so that we can help convince you to choose Lawrence, so to speak. So with that, I'll conclude my portion. But before I turn it over to questions, I would want to give Jared an opportunity to speak, because he was my partner on this, and he, you know, none of this would have been possible without Jared's assistance. So Jared, go ahead.
Thanks, Joe. Some of you have seen me around the building. I'm the city's graphic designer, and I just wanted to point out that both Visit Lawrence and Choose Lawrence are completely internal affairs. We aren't hiring outside firms for any of this work. Daniel Byer, the manager of communications, and myself kind of spearhead this. And since we work in the halls, we're very agile. Mayor Collier and Controller Fenwick, it's really hard to talk when I hear myself inside these. They just let us be really agile with the methods we can use to market the city. So the site is still a work in progress, but whenever Joe has a new project to put on the pipeline page, he literally walks five steps and tells me, and five minutes later, it's live. So we can really crank stuff out really fast and really high quality. So yeah, it's just keep your eyes peeled on Choose Lawrence and Visit Lawrence, because we're not done yet. They're just going to keep growing as the city grows.
Thank you so much, Jared, Daniel, and Joe, and Dan, for sharing with us this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity and support.
You're welcome. Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes of regular meetings of January 4th and January 20th, 2021. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion, Counsel Russell, second, Counsel Wells. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, vote. Counsel Russell? Counsel Denny?
Aye.
Counsel Giles?
Aye.
Counsel Chevlat?
Aye.
Counsel Rusamoroff?
Aye.
Counsel Whitfield?
Aye.
Counsel Freeman?
Aye.
Counsel Wells?
Aye.
Counsel Chavis?
Aye.
Counsel Chevlat?
Aye, again.
Okay, good. I had to make sure I got you. You moved on my screen. Okay, so motion carries unanimous. Next, we have approval, no, signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion, Counsel Whitfield?
Second.
Second, Counsel Freeman? Roll call, vote. Counsel Freeman?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. As I was. Is there any discussion before we conduct our roll call? Seeing none? Counsel Freeman?
Yes.
Counsel Wells?
Yes.
Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Counsel Rusamoroff?
Yes.
Counsel Chevlat?
Yes.
Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Counsel Denny?
Yes.
Counsel Giles?
Yes.
Counsel Chavis?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries unanimous. Next, we have reports of committees. We have one report from finance.
Madam Chair, the Finance Committee met this evening. It would just basically have two items. Resolution number 10 was withdrawn from consideration by the sponsor. And then also, since we're roughly a month into the year, we, even though it's listed as new business, we just had a discussion regarding Resolution Number 1, 2021, the financing and some thoughts about that. And we didn't take a vote, but there was a consensus that we would like to see that passed.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, unfinished business. Resolution Number 10, 2020, that has been withdrawn by the sponsor. Proposal Number 1, 2021, if the clerk could read that by title.
Yes, he did. Proposal Number 1, 2021, introduced by Counsel Chavis, a proposal for an ordinance adopting and enacting a 14 supplement to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Lawrence, Indiana.
Okay, so the supplement has been updated. Our counsel attorney, Counsel Wheeler, has already provided us, you know, a brief synopsis of that. Does anybody need her to, why don't you go ahead and just, just for order, go ahead and explain to our councilors, because I'd like to go ahead and have us make a motion and approve this tonight.
Yes, ma'am. So again, this is the code supplement adopting all of the council-approved ordinances and most important resolutions from November of 2019 to approximately November of 2020. As you recall, at our last meeting, I asked that you table that proposed ordinance at that time, because we had found a small error in one of the street ordinances that you had passed during that period of time. We just got the corrected supplement pages back from the publisher today. So if you would like to take that off the table and pass it tonight, that would be appropriate. Everything in it is correct and reflected what you all approved over that period of time.
Great, thank you. All right, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
This is an ordinance, so it's going to require unanimous.
Correct.
And to pass this on first reading, okay?
This is, this is in first reading, I don't think, isn't it?
Well, we did it the first, last time. I'm not sure we did. Did we, Kathy?
I don't think it's by title, I think.
I think we tabled it.
Let me look at the minutes.
I'm sorry. I didn't think about this.
If it's not first reading, that is fine. It said it was, it was introduced and read by title only.
Okay, so it was introduced.
Okay, we're good?
Yes. So you're good. Sorry.
I have a motion from Counsel Chevlat. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Counsel Russell. I heard you first. Okay, any discussion? All right, roll call, vote. Counsel Freeman?
Yes.
Counsel Wells?
Yes.
Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Counsel Rusamoroff?
Yes.
Counsel Chevlat?
Yes.
Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Counsel Denny?
Yes.
Counsel Giles?
Yes.
Counsel Chavis?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Next, we have new business. Consideration of council appointment to the Economic Development Commission. Okay, I'm going to open up nominations for economic development.
Sure. Madam President, I'd like to nominate Betty Robinson.
Okay. Okay. Any other nominations for economic development? Okay, seeing none, nominations are closed. Roll call, vote for our one nominee, Ms. Betty Robinson. Counsel Freeman?
Yes.
Counsel Wells?
Yes.
Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Counsel Rusa Moroff?
Yes.
Counsel Chevlat?
Yes.
Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Counsel Denny?
Yes.
Counsel Giles?
Yes.
Counsel Chavis?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Congratulations, Ms. Robinson, for your appointment to the Economic Development Commission. Counsel Denny, if you could please send the clerk all of Ms. Robinson's contact information, that would be great.
Will do.
All righty. Next, we have Resolution Number 1, 2021. If the clerk could please read that by title?
Resolution 1, 2021, introduced by Counsel Chavis, a resolution of the common counsel of the City of Lawrence, Indiana concerning retention of Bose McKinnon and Evans LLP as legal counsel.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'd like to make the motion.
Motion, Counsel Denny?
I'll second that, Rusa Moroff.
Second Counsel Rusa Moroff. Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Counsel Wells?
This is first reading on this, is this what I understand? So this has to have a majority vote passed tonight?
No, because it's a resolution, not an ordinance, so it does, yeah.
I was just curious, excuse me. We're renewing the contract, but yet we didn't, we haven't looked anyplace else for any competitive bids or anything on this. We're just automatically renewing, what's the amount?
The amount is $80,000. And the contract was sent out by our council attorney approximately two weeks ago. It's pretty... No. Um, any counselor is, can look or make recommendations for, you know, council representation. That's always an option. But I think, I will speak for myself, and I won't speak for the rest of the council, but I'll speak for myself, that I am very satisfied and have been for the past five years with our representation. We get excellent counsel, and for me personally, I don't see a need to look for or to bid out. But certainly, you as a counselor can always do that. We will review this contract every year. So if you have any interest to bring anyone else to the table, I would recommend that you start doing that maybe in the October, November timeframe. And that is certainly always an option, and that option is available to any council member that would like to pursue that.
So that wouldn't be something, I'm sorry, that wouldn't be something that would automatically be done by the Finance Committee?
No, we have never done that in the past, anyway. Counsel Chevlat or Counsel Freeman?
No, it's never done by the, it's never done by the Finance Committee. It's usually by the council as a whole and driven by the council president. But as you correctly pointed out, Madam President, any counselor can go out and talk to any attorney to provide an opportunity to present their proposal. But I would agree with you, Counsel Chavis, that we've had a good record here, and to bring someone new on at this point would be a huge learning curve.
Any other discussion?
I just wanted, because of, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, can I speak, please?
Yes, absolutely.
I just want to piggyback with you, you know, with you and Counsel Chevlat, that Bose has been just a quality firm for us. As you can see, the City of Lawrence has grown in several projects, and their expertise, there was times that their expertise has brought grant opportunities and cost-saving opportunities to the city, you know, for both sides, that even the city wasn't quite aware of, because of the, you know, their hands in the community and the State House and all that. So I think they are more than worth all of the dollars that we spend. Matter of fact, I know that they typically write off $15,000 to $20,000 a year in billables to continue to serve our community. So they are a stakeholder, and I support, I support Bose McKinnon.
Thank you. Any other counselors?
Madam President, if I could follow up, please?
Sure.
Yeah, I brought this up, not because I have an issue with performance, but I think, you know, as a member of the council, I think it's our responsibility to get the best for the taxpayers' money. And that's the only reason why I brought it up. I've always said that I thought that $80,000 is a lot. And prior to this law firm, I think the council, previous councils were paying like in the $20,000 range. So anyway, that's the only reason why I brought it up, is because I just think that, you know, we're doing, it would do our due diligence to, to at least look and see if, because I'm sure there's plenty of other qualified law firms out there that we're just, we're not spending more of the taxpayers' money than they'd be. And that's the only reason why I brought it up.
Good point. I will, I will just say that you get what you pay for. Any quality law firm that would provide us the same level of service would charge us that and probably more, but that's just my perspective. Thank you so much for your feedback. We have a motion from Counsel Denny. We have a second from Counsel Rusa Moroff. Roll call, vote. Counsel Freeman?
Yes.
Counsel Wells?
No.
Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Counsel Rusa Moroff?
Yes.
Counsel Chevlat?
Yes.
Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Counsel Denny?
Yes.
Counsel Giles?
Yes.
Motion, oh, Counsel Chavis, absolutely yes. Motion carries eight-one. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
For your service, and we look forward to another year.
Definitely.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have Resolution Number 2, 2021. If the clerk could please read that by title?
Resolution Number 2, 2021, introduced by Counsel Chevlat, a resolution of the common counsel of the City of Lawrence, Indiana approving a form of lease and taking other actions regarding the proposed lease.
Okay, that will be assigned to the Finance Committee. And Counsel Denny will get the details out for the date and time of that meeting, unless you have it already, Counsel Denny?
I believe we'll try to plan it at 5:30 on the mid-month meeting, right before the mid-month meeting.
Okay. Okay. Great. Kathy, did you get that down?
Yeah, I'm writing it right now.
Okay. So pending confirmation from Kathy that that time slot's available.
Correct.
February 17th.
Okay. February 17th at 5:30 for the Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Kathy.
It's probably available, because I usually don't book anything right before our meetings.
Okay, thank you. Let us know if there's a change. Okay, next on the agenda, we have comments of the administration. And I see the mayor and Controller Fenwick coming forward.
Yeah, both of us tonight.
Okay. No worries.
Just have a couple of things, a correction real quick, Lisa, the Black History Month celebration will be on February 25th.
Thank you.
And it will be streamed on Facebook Live. If you have any suggestions, ideas, please contact either Humphrey Nagala or Jeanette Jackson, here with the city, and they're helping to put that together. I think, I think we talked about, last time, we talked about the Mac, the Pat McAfee Project. Some of you may have seen some of the comments on our city's website and Facebook. That's going to be a great project for the City of Lawrence. It's a great reuse for that particular arena over there, and I look forward to having Pat in the, into the community, into the community. Jason, I think I'll turn this over to you now.
Good evening. I wanted to give the council an update on the state of the city's finances, as we are nearing the end of, or at least closing out our fiscal year 2020. We still have another roughly 20 days or so before we'll file our annual report, but we do know kind of where we stand as it pertains to our general fund. So hopefully, you can see the screen that I just put up. Obviously, the last time we talked was around the budget that was approved for 2021, and obviously, there was a fair amount of caution as we were heading into this year. There was uncertainty, and still is, as it pertains to our income tax revenue. We had some estimates as to what we thought we would get for this year. We're off to a good start in that regard for 2021. We're actually ahead for the year in, with income taxes versus what we budgeted. But we also still have to be, you know, pretty cautious as we head into fiscal year 2022, which is when we'll receive income taxes that were collected for the fiscal year 2020, but back to 2020. So we actually ended the year better than expected in our general fund. So the chart that I put up shows our general fund balances going back to 2010 through the end of last year. And as an example, you can see that we started in 2016 with a balance of about 1.5 million. And so we've steadily tried to grow that reserve each year, initially setting a target of 10% of budgeted expenses for 2016, and ultimately raising it to our current goal of 20%. That 20% number, by the way, for fiscal year 2020 was just shy of about 4.8 million. So you can see, again, starting from 1.5 million in 2016, we actually ended 2019 with 7.4 million in total reserve. And for 2020, that total reserve number is now just under 8.7 million. Of that, about 4.7 is the 20% level. So if we maintain that 20%, we ensure that we don't have to borrow throughout the year for cash flow purposes until we receive our property taxes in June and December. And so the amounts above that 4.7 million, as we've done the last two budget cycles, we have released some of that for one-time capital expenditures, and for 2021, that number was roughly, I believe, 1.5 million. So all in all, 2020 actually came in better than what we were expecting. And because of that, I know back in the budget proposals from last year, we indicated that we were going to put 5% in the salary ordinances, but not fund the 5% in the budgets. And we wanted to wait and see where we were by year end, and then if we thought we could offer raises to city employees, we would then come back to the council with an additional appropriation request to fund that amount. And I think based on where we ended 2020, we are very comfortable being able to do that. We still have some uncertainty heading into 2022, but I believe the amount of reserve we have over and above our 20% level will cushion us for whatever hit we take next year in the income tax. So I think our plan would be to bring an additional appropriation request at the first council meeting in April, and we would like to offer a 3% salary increase. And then in addition to that, a 2% bonus for employees. That 2% bonus is obviously a one-time payment. The 3% would be a base salary increase. But given the, again, fiscal year 2020 results and where we are now, we feel that's a very sustainable number. So that's the update that I wanted to give tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you, couns, sorry, I'm calling everybody counselor, not Controller Fenwick.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any citizens' comments? None, Kathy?
No one sent me an email.
Okay, no citizens' comments. We are adjourned. Everyone be safe and have a wonderful evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, guys. Have a nice night. Thanks.